Right.
Yeah, well, like I said, swine is the family name. Hogs is what this hogs refers to dinner. So see, that's one of those things depending on the judgment, depending on how they would interpret it.
Welcome everyone to our city council meeting for January 13th. I'd like to remind everybody to please turn off your cell phones because they do interfere with our recording devices and for the people who have hearing aids. So if I can have a roll call to establish quorum, Madam Clerk?
Nikki Snyder?
Here.
Terry McClung?
Right here.
Melissa Green?
Here.
Susan Harmon?
Here.
Bob Combs?
Here.
Harry Meyer?
Here.
All right. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Get a motion for approval of the agenda?
Approval of the agenda, second.
All right. additions, corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, sing five of saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, a motion to approve the minutes for December 9th?
Motion to approve, second.
Any additions, corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, sing five of saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Under our commission appointments, we got an application, reapplication actually from Tom Buford for position three. Position two?
Motion to approve, Tom.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Thanks, Tom.
Hearing none. All those in favor, sing five of saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Recuse?
I'm sorry?
Recuse.
Under the CAPC, we have a new applicant, Jeff Carter, whose application is in year handout. He has been nominated by the CAPC and confirmed by the council. So whatever we want to do on that, if we want to wait, we can wait until next meeting. Give a chance for everybody. Mr. McClung?
If anybody wants to check him out, we can do it next meeting, but if it's agreeable, I'd make a motion and put him on now if, because we've changed our format for our, well, I say we, I may not even still be on there, but the CAPC has changed where their business meeting now is going to be the second meeting of the month. So if he is put on now, he can be put right to work.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor of Jeff Carter on CAPC, sing five of saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that brings us to the city council seats. We can either discuss that now or we can wait until later.
Oh, well, I was going to make a motion to put Terry McClung back on. I'll second that.
Any other nominations or discussion? Ms. Snyder?
I'd like to renominate Bob to go back on.
Well, let's do one at a time, I guess.
That's what I thought we were going to do.
Beg pardon?
That's what I thought you were going to do, was one at a time.
Yeah, we've got one position. We've got two positions available on there. So if everybody, do we have any discussion about Terry McClung on there?
No, but I'd like to say I'm not interested in CAPC.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right, no further discussion. All those in favor of reappointing Mr. McClung, sing five of saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we've got position two for a city council member on CAPC.
Okay, I'd like to nominate Susan Harmon for the other position.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, sing five of saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. That brings us up to public comments. Please limit your time to three minutes, please. Please state your name and address.
My name is Phil Vogt. I live at One Wood Circle here in the York Springs. Have been for just about three years, maybe a little more, a little less. I'm old, I don't remember a whole lot anymore. So, the reason I'm coming tonight is when I first got here, somebody told me that I had to buy these yellow bags and have my trash picked up. So I went along with it because I thought, well, that's what you've got to do to live in York Springs. But then after a while, I started asking around. I went to different places in town, sometimes when I was out and about, talked to some of the people, fire department, the club owners, and no one could tell me why we were doing that. I got things like, well, it was done because they started an effort to have a recycling center and they needed a building and of course, things you needed to recycle. Well, I found out that was about 25 years ago, or maybe a little more, when they started that from the residents that I've talked to that have been here 25 years. And they can't recall every time they didn't have to buy those bags. So that's made me start calling around. First, I called the city. I looked up in the book, in the phone book, and found the Carroll County Recycling Center. I thought I'd call the county recycling center because that's where everything was supposed to go for recycling. Well, I found out that was actually a business name. And so I made another call. I said, who can I call to find out what's going on with this? So I was asked to call the Public Works and talk to Beth over there. I've come to find out Beth is the one that controls those plastic bags. She's the one that buys them and then takes them to the store to sell, to put them on the shelves so we as residents can go buy and buy these bags. Some of them are smaller, some are larger, and the prices kind of differ. But then it kept knocking on me, why? I said, where's the money going? Where are the profits going? She goes, there is no profit. We sell the bags at cost. That's not good business. I mean, if you're going to sell something, you want to make a profit. So I asked Beth, how long has this been going on? She said, well, as long as I've been here, and I believe she said six years, don't hold me to that because that's a lot of people I've talked to. And I said, is there anyone that can give me some better information on that? She asked me to call Kim Stryker. So I called Kim and she came up basically with the same thing that I'd been getting with the residents, is they thought this was something that had to do with recycling effort. And she said she had checked on it. And I'm kind of hoping that she does to get some more information. So at this juncture, with all that's being said, nobody's making any money? Why are we buying these bags? Thank you very much for your time.
I am a business owner and local resident. I live at 53 Bond Street. I just wanted to say a couple positive things about the entertainment district. I know it's been a lot of controversy. I know there's been a lot of concerns, and I think a lot of the concerns have been really valid. But I think you guys have done a great job addressing them and researching and kind of coming up with solutions regarding it. I just wanted to speak out in support of it because I know a lot of efforts got into it. And, you know, there's a tendency to get to hear from the concerns, but not so much from the support. So I wanted to offer that to you. I also feel like the sunset clause was a good decision that you made to put into that. I think that kind of helps create a sense of ease. It gives an opportunity for everybody to experience it and make sure that it's working okay. And then also an easy way to end it if for some reason it's not. So anyway, just thank you for your efforts on that and I hope, okay.
Hi, Damon Hinke here, 19 Thomas, representing a number of entities, including the Chamber of Commerce, Main Street Board Member, and my company, Ozark Mountain Vacation Rentals. I think you guys pretty well know where I stand on the entertainment district. But in talking in these past few days since the workshop, I think I've noticed that a lot of us aren't approaching this really from the 30,000-foot level and where we're going as a destination into the future. I think a lot of what I hear is, what are the, what we determined was there was a lot of difference between the power drinkers of the past and the new, younger audience that's coming to town for the craft beers. I think we're going to find that it's a more responsible drinker. It adds depth to us as an offering for a destination, and I don't think you're going to find that we have the issues that we can. And if we do, again, we're back to the sunset clause. But I appreciate everybody's time who has spent some time on the phone with me and all the conversations that you did. I know several council people made some outbound calls to different businesses in the area, and I certainly appreciate you doing the extra research to make sure we make the right decision on this. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Lori Smolli. I live at 17 Pivot Rock Road. I'm here to talk about wages of city employees. Someone brought to my attention through this budgeting process that some of our full-time employees are having to make use of state assistance and food banks because their wages aren't stretching far enough. So I took a look and I noticed that there are just a small handful of employees who are earning less than 10 an hour, which went up to 10 an hour beginning, at the beginning of this year. But we have quite a few who are earning less than 12 an hour, congregated mostly in Public Works, which is a department where a meeting I attended just recently, they're losing employees to other communities and other organizations because they can pay substantially better. So while you're having your meeting in a couple weeks to talk about budgets, I would really like to suggest that we do the social, I mean, we're a town built on social justice. We provided benefits for all kinds of different families when no one else in Arkansas was doing it. And we had ordinance 2223 when it was being fought so hard. Let's do what's right again and pay, you know, let's make a base wage for the city of $12 an hour, which isn't that much, but it's going to get people above the poverty level and maybe make a commitment to getting to a living wage of $15 an hour within five years. It's not that much more of an increase every year. It doesn't affect that large a portion of city employees, but it's going to bring the people that we lose the fastest to a level where they're going to want to stay and develop their skills. It's going to make them worth our investing for them to get certifications and experience and education. So please take that into consideration when you have the budget meeting next. Thank you.
My name is Autumn Slane. I'm with Grotto, also entertainment district member. I think when you just go into this decision for our town, all I'm asking is that, I'm going to quote Winston Churchill, "We have nothing to fear but fear itself." I think that making this decision not based upon fear, but making this decision based on the needs of this town and what we've all come together as a young community here. And I feel like every meeting, we've all consistently showed up. We've all consistently made it here because we believe in this and, you know, I hope we can take this step to the future. Thank you, guys. Good luck.
I want to say, I'll just spin over here from Fayetteville. Under the wire, so.
Is that it? All right, that concludes our public comments. Our next item of business is a hospital employee transition. Do I get a motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss.
Go ahead.
We have Dr. House here, and he's going to talk about this transition. I do want to caution council and everybody to realize that we are still under contract with allegiance and there may be a possibility of a lawsuit before this is all over with. So we've got to be careful about some of our extraneous conversations going through here. So, Dr. House, I will let you kind of give an overview of, I mean, this is basically dealing with the insurance transition and payroll.
Yeah, this resolution is about payroll.
Correct, okay.
So as you all know, we've been working quite a bit for the last several months to transition allegiance out and take over control of the hospital. And so this is part of that process. Allegiance obviously is not going to continue to make payroll once we've taken over. So in order for the hospital commission to do that, the city has to put it in your notes or minutes or whatever in order for that to happen. So at this time, we've got, we did hire a company to come in and kind of help us through this process, and they have been excellent. They have really helped us to identify some of the serious problems and ways to fix that and have, I can't tell you all the different stuff that they've been doing, but it has really been helpful. And I'm quite excited actually about where we're going with the hospital. It is still going to be a big slog. I'm not going to tell you otherwise. And it's going to take a lot of commitment from everybody in the community, but I think that we're going to wind up with a hospital that we can be proud of again. So I'll be happy to answer any questions about what we're talking about tonight.
Well, and part of this also for the council's information is that the municipal league, because the employees will be falling under city's insurance with the municipal league, the municipal league is actually the one that's requiring that we have this put into our minutes for this transition. So this is something that municipal leagues is requiring. Mr. McClung?
So I assume, because that was not mentioned, that the funding for these wages is going to come from the hospital commission's coffers?
That's correct.
Is that going to be like a monthly allotment? How's that going to, how's that going to transfer?
The way I understand it is that even though they will be city employees, the hospital will do its own payroll. And obviously, we will be the ones, the commission will be the ones paying for that.
Can they do that?
Yes. They have to do that, but state law.
They do? So the hospital actually does the payroll?
Correct. Susan?
But you pay, but you sign the paycheck?
Yes, I think. No, the commission does.
Just kind of like the CAPC does?
CAPC in parks.
Parks, okay.
And that's by state law.
Okay. So, but who, then, does it fall under Lonny as far as checks and balances?
They still have their auditing.
Huh? Pardon me?
They'll still be audited. I mean, when you say checks and balance.
Well, I understand, but I mean, who's?
Who checks the CAPC?
Well, no.
No, I mean, it's the same, what I'm saying is, I guess I'm not understanding checks and balance. What you mean?
I just, I'm just curious as to who watches the checkbook?
That'd be the commission. Similar to what the CAPC does in the parks and watching their checkbook.
Okay. Ms. Harmon? That's good enough for now, I guess.
Well? Ms. Harmon?
Okay, so just as a quick question, this is going to be a permanent change from what it is currently?
Yes.
Which means that, how many employees are we talking about?
Around 50.
Okay, so somewhere in the 50 figure.
Right.
And they will qualify for the city's program. And will we see that information, going back to what Terry is saying, will we see that information on our budget information as far as that money passing? Will there be, will there be a separate account that we will see? Will we see that money? Because Lonny's going to have, well, no, Lonny's not going to have to take care of it. It'll be completely separate. We won't see it at all.
Correct.
Unless they submit, except when they submit their monthly or quarterly information to us, it will have a line item for insurance, correct? For employees?
Correct. Well, I don't know about.
Well, I mean, the money, you have to show it somewhere. So where is it shown?
Well, we currently have money that doesn't show up on your budget, correct?
Right. What I'm saying is if you submitted your financials to us on a monthly or quarterly basis, we, you won't. You don't do that ever. Okay, so.
They're separate.
But again, all of our information is public. And so, I mean, it's, the city has it, it's available. So it's not like we're, you know, we do anything in the dark.
Okay, so how on the city side, I guess is what maybe Terry's asking, will that be shown? That we're, that we've got 50 employees under the city's insurance plan? How, where is that shown?
That will be under the hospital's commission's records.
So it won't show up in the city at all?
No.
How can it not? I mean, it's all part of the same policy, right?
Well, it is, but it's still not going to see anything that we will see. It would be under the hospital's records, not under the city's general budget.
But it increases the city's premium?
Well, it may or may not.
It does increase the city's premium because the city, the hospital will be paying that premium.
Okay. So I mean, there's a, it's a separate premium, I guess?
Because of the employees, yes. Well, it's separate to the effect that it's under the hospital.
Just one little question about that. That would make our group larger, right? Which could bring premiums down overall?
That's what I'm wondering. I'm not really sure how that.
I don't know. Lonny, I don't, do you have any feeling on how the insurance works with groups? You need to come up to the microphone, sir. I know this is out of your bailiwick.
From what I understand, the municipal league will be billing them directly. And so the money will, we will not be paying the money out to the municipal league. But it'll all be, so their employees will be billed to them and they will write a check for that premium. So we will not be.
That's not what we do at the CAPC now, is it?
No, it's, it's going to be handled differently than the CAPC at parks from that standpoint because that does flow through and then they reimburse the city for that because we sent them a bill. But this, they will be doing their own payroll and they will be billed for, by the municipal league for the insurance and any other of the benefits that they choose to participate in that the city has, like the retirement plans, et cetera.
Go ahead.
No, I mean, I've spoken. Wait my turn.
Will it be the same group policy?
Nikki, you got to hand up your.
Mr. Thomas?
So I assume the city could, in other words, why are we setting up CAPC in one way and the hospital another? It seems like there should be some consistency. Why don't, why don't you just handle this exactly like you do CAPC?
Well, I think there's a number of different reasons. Number one is that we already have those in place and they're not, they're not 50 employees in either place. So that's one thing. The other thing is their methods of payment. They have differentials and shift differentials and some things that we do not deal with here. And we were, we were getting set up where we could do it, but then they were able to acquire the program and continue and do the payroll themselves. And they can do it more efficiently than we can do it and then bill them for it. And so it will, I think, work out from what I understand and my involvement, a lot better for them to do it than for us to do it and then bill them like we do the others.
Because of the size of?
I'm sorry?
Because of the size of the?
Well, the size and, and they have shift differentials, they have a whole lot of other factors that we do not deal with currently. And so we were getting set up and geared up to do it for them, just like we do the others. But it came up that they were able to get, have the program that would do, would continue to do what they're doing. And it was more feasible for them to do it than for us to take it off and do it.
Okay. Mr. Meyer, did you have something?
Well, they're getting paid from hospital commission money, which isn't tax dollars and the CAPC is tax dollars. And I guess that makes a big difference in that, too.
Well, and the parks, they're, they're tax dollars. And of course, we, every, you know, I don't know when the CAPC was set up the way it is. But another thing, see, is we operate under the same federal identification number and we issue all the W-2s, do the quarterly payroll tax reports and everything. And so CAPC does not have a separate ID number, to the best of our knowledge. Parks doesn't have a separate ID number. And it would not be really feasible or prudent for them to acquire a separate federal identification number.
Mr. McClung?
Okay, the, I know the hospital has, you know, a fair-sized bank account. But my concern is this, is, you know, in the best of our worlds, how long do you think you're going to have to float it?
I have a question for me.
I believe it is, Dr.
I don't know that question.
Well, obviously, nobody can answer that, that question clearly and with any sense of accuracy. The, the projections that, that we look at right now is that the hospital should be able to take over the payroll, you know, sometime this year. Don't know that for sure, obviously. The, the hospital, you have to remember that the hospital is an ongoing concern. They've been making their payroll. They've been paying their bills with, you know, obviously some exceptions. So it's, it's not as if this is a new business that's starting and now we've got to go out and, and figure out where all the revenue is going to come from. You know, we, we have Medicare accounts receivable and accounts payable. So all of these things are already in place. It's, the, we'll be able to just simply, or maybe simply is the wrong word, but we'll be able to step in, take over, and then the commission, the reason that we have this money to begin with was exactly for this purpose. When, when allegiance was brought in 12 years ago, whenever it was, the reason they set up this, this rent, the way it is, is to, the way it was explained to me, was that in case something happened, the commission could step in and run the hospital. And that's why we've built up this reserve, is exactly for this situation. It is obviously not going to be an indefinite thing. It's not a bottomless pit that we can just continue to pay money out. We understand that. But like I said, we have money that will be coming back in because we're seeing patients. And that's what the hospital does.
Ms. Snyder?
Okay, John. So basically, what it comes down to is when allegiance pulls out, they walk out the door permanently. Are we going to be keeping the vast majority of our personnel at the hospital?
I would say yes, but obviously, I'm not the person who will be making that choice.
But I mean, but what I mean is, these people, these employees are ours.
Exact, that's right.
Okay, so we're going to continue on smoothly with experienced personnel?
That's right.
Everything's going to be status quo going on like it did before? We will just have?
Hopefully improved.
Yes, please. As far as lawsuits, I can bring people. Anyway, but so it'll be a smooth transition because we're keeping the people who need to know are the ones who will be continuing on, and that's the biggest thing.
Right.
So, okay, that's good. Reassuring.
Ms. Harmon?
I just have a quick question. And I guess it's probably, well, I have two questions. Number one, Dr. House, you just mentioned something about at some point you're hoping to take over payroll. But our ordinance, our resolution here says February 1st, correct?
I don't, I don't think I said that we were hoping to take. I don't think I said that we were hoping to take over payroll. If I did, that wasn't what I meant to say. The, we are, this resolution does take over the payroll.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure that I heard that correctly.
So if I misspoke, I apologize. And so I'm not sure what I was referring to when I said.
Okay, so February 1st?
Yes.
Okay. And then Lonnie, the only question I have for you is, it sounds like the health insurance will, and you may not know this, it's going to be offered through municipal league to these employees. Will it be the same group or will they have their, will they have a separate group?
As I understand it, it will be the same group.
It'll be the same group. Okay, so if anybody at any point wanted to reference that, they could contact municipal league if they wanted to find out how many people were on the city's insurance program.
Sure.
Okay.
Ms. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion that we assign this resolution to number and read it for passage.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Ms. McClung to read, sign the number and read for passage and second.
Say, Harry.
Welcome to my world.
Here are you?
No. I said, welcome to my world, I should go over to you tonight.
We got a motion and a second, any discussion?
All right.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Six zero. Resolution number will be seven six eight. A resolution to accept duties regarding hospital staff benefits. Whereas the City Council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, having been informed that Allegiance Health Management is withdrawing from its current duties of management of the Eureka Springs Hospital and whereas the City of Eureka Springs, through its hospital commission, will be assuming some of the duties thereof, including payroll duties, and whereas the commission wishes to transfer the employees on February 1st, 2020, to commission control and thereby entitled them to city pay and benefits as of that date, and whereas the hospital commission will be responsible for the cost of the pay and benefits extended to the hospital employees. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, that this council approves the use of the city finance department to disperse hospital payroll and benefits on or after February 1st, 2020, from funds provided for such purpose by the Eureka Springs Hospital Commission. Furthermore, nothing with regard to this resolution or actions authorized hereby shall be considered a waiver by the city or the hospital commission for recruitment of funds dispersed or expended and/or costs associated therewith, should the hospital commission and/or city fail to reach satisfactory terms of disengagement with Allegiance Health Management for the Eureka Springs Hospital.
Thank you. All right, our next order of business is the Carroll County Solid Waste Rate Increase. Get a motion to discuss.
Oh, move.
Second.
All right. Mr. Jackson, so you're here, would you like to come up and, I think the city council has a copy of this letter that, where we got a rate increase of 3.25%. And I believe you said that amounts to approximately the average residential owner of how much?
Yep, the CPI, CPI for the past 12 months, contract. I think I also sent you the CPI report. Uh huh, you have that, that comes out for the last 12 months. We used the last two months as zero, even though December's not in yet. Be honest with you, for a long time, you know, we went without using the CPI increase and didn't increase at all. But these last years, we've had, waste management, of course, has increased our disposal rate, which right now, that's the only place that we can go. And they're going to probably go up about 3.5. So we have that expense and as well as some of the rising costs that we have in maintenance, personnel, insurance, those things. We hope to get to a point where we have the margins and the reserves that we need for equipment and capital to be able to provide the level of service that we try to constantly provide. But I'd be glad to answer any questions.
You said how much per the average user this would go up?
I think it goes, I was looking at that and I also compared it to Harry.
I wouldn't say 35 or 40 cents, was that?
Your rate goes 13.
1344.
13, it goes up to 1344.
From what was it?
It was 12, 12.
Is that a month?
Yes.
Just a minute, I'll get it right here for you. It's 1302 right now.
1302.
1302, so.
Forty-two cents.
Forty-two cents.
Yeah, about forty-two cents. And it goes up to 1344.
Okay.
That's your basic rate.
Ms. Harmon?
When was the last time this was increased?
This would be, it was raised last year, but we took a very low rate, lower than the CPI, and that was the first time it had been raised since 2008.
Ms. Snyder?
Phil, do we have any idea when we're going to be able to start doing plastic goodies again?
Right now.
Have you heard anything?
The market is so, I'll give you an idea of one of the problems that we have. In 2018, we were getting paid from 195 for the first part of the year down to 175 for cardboard. We process over 500 tons of cardboard. This year, we got $30 a ton. There's a, the recycling markets have deteriorated significantly. We expect a rebound, but I don't expect a rebound until late next year. Of course, we, when we're collecting it and we're processing it, even though we're not, you know, it's virtually that low of a cost, it does eliminate the cost of transporting it and landfilling it, which some people are doing now. In order to avoid that, we're also taking on some other, you know, recycling products to keep from doing that. I would like to see a rebound in markets. And when you get the rebound in markets, that also creates interest in, where people are using more and more products, which would bring that back into the stream. Right now, it's not into the stream. Everybody's just landfilling it.
Well, the general understanding is when China refused our recycle stuff, that was why we had to cut out plastics, put in plastics and recycle. And that's what I'm wondering.
Part of that, part of that problem that we had with China, it wasn't just the United States, it was everybody, but we were shipping garbage. In other words, we were not shipping them the level, the cardboard levels and the levels of plastics and stuff like that, which we were supposed to be or what they were anticipating. So a big percentage of what we were sending to China, they had to turn around and landfill. So that's when they went back in and using their own virgin product, which of course, with their population, can't last for too long because they just don't have that much, much product. So we expect that there will be a chain reaction, like I say, late next year. I'd like to see it earlier, I really would.
Yeah, I hate putting that stuff in the trash.
Yeah, I understand. But we, we constantly look for markets. We, I mean, just through everything that we can, for anything that somebody's using something that, you know, that might be of, that where we could capture it and use it because of course, that saves us some landfilling it.
Ms. McClung?
Yeah, does this require any action from us or is this informational?
I don't see anything.
Basically, my understanding is informational unless you object and then I have to explain to you the reason that we're doing it.
Yeah.
Okay, it's been explained to me.
All right, any further comments?
One question, where is our trash going?
Pardon?
Where is our trash going?
Right now, we go to Tonnitown, which is over by Saddle Springs. Transportation, it's the closest right now.
Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate the time, gentlemen.
All right, that gets us back under some unfinished business with the ordinance for the permanent entertainment district with Sunset Clause. Get a motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss, second.
All right, who wants to lead off? Mr. Meyer?
I've spoken to a couple of the, do we have the surveys that, would you like that now? For those? Bob, why don't you just read them to us, please?
Well, I think you're talking about the permities response?
Yeah, yes, the alcohol permit.
This is, was sent out by Kim Striker. She sent the survey out to 25 licenses.
Is all that information on your paper there? Did you see one of those?
Yeah. Pass those out and.
Are we supposed to take one?
Yes, please. No, not you, but everybody else.
Oh, I didn't see you have one.
I had one, I got one, okay.
That's a good one.
And.
Okay.
About a couple more for the newspapers down there?
Yeah.
Right here.
Well, and other people down.
Yeah. Anybody else want one?
Do you all want one?
Here.
You turned away too fast.
Someone over there wants.
Everybody have one, need one, one? All right.
Four months.
Mr. Thomas, you want to?
Go over the survey or?
Please, sir. I know you and Kim helped tally these things.
That Bob Thomas and the mayor worked cooperatively on this survey?
Yeah.
It's a new year, Bob.
Let me say that again. We did, and I think we got some good results. Yeah, so basically, we surveyed and we, we made it available. Kim sent it out using email system for all downtown businesses. And, you know, I placed it around town at four different locations for people to, to be able to access the survey and then it was also available at the public meeting. We ended up getting 83 responses and they were split like this. The residents only, there were 24 responses, 12 were in favor of it and 12 were not in favor of it. The resident business owners, let me get my figures, I don't have the figures for that. Kim did the chart, I do better with numbers. And I didn't bring them. Anyway, the resident business owners, I think it was like 18 against and 21 for. And then the non-resident business owners was eight against and a few more for, but, so the total was 45 in favor and 35 against. And then if you look down, you can see where the, the survey for the days of the week and the hours of operation. But I think Harry was asking about the permities and Kim surveyed 25 of them, nine responded and eight were in favor and one was against.
Well, that's not much of a, a number for it. You know, we've got a big chunk of them that aren't even going to want to respond to a survey and may not even want to participate in this thing. What are we doing it for?
I can't account, you know, people choose not to, not to respond to surveys.
Of course.
What can you do?
Ms. Harmon?
I, I do appreciate you putting this information together, so we've got it in our hand. I know we've had a couple workshops or public meetings and we've discussed it quite often over the past, what, four or five months at least? So I do appreciate you putting this together. I think if, if someone in town has not heard about the entertainment district at this point, they are living behind closed doors.
What are you talking about? I just, okay, I gotta, I gotta address the power drinker thing. Whereas the power drinkers are a thing of the past and the people that drink now, that come here and the young people are not the kind of people that are going to be like our generation, that were drunks and caused all kinds of problems. I was at Chelsea's after the fat tire thing and I watched a table full of bicycle boys there consume several shots, several bottles of beer, eight, six or seven pizzas. Those guys left pretty wound up. Hey. So, we can consume alcohol if we want and we, and people will consume it at their, at their leisure. I don't think it can say that we can't predict the future. I can, I can think of certain events and perhaps we can exclude certain events. I would say that we should close the entertainment district during bikes, blues and barbecue, during the spring thing. Maybe at other points in time, in, during the year because I think it can get out of hand. That's all I got to say.
Mr. Thomas?
Well, I'm ready to make a motion, but before I make a motion, I want to explain how I'm going to vote. I've listened to everybody. I mean, I've had more people talking to me about this than anything else. It comes down to basically half and half. This is a pretty close survey, all of the surveys have been pretty close. Half of the people who talk about not wanting to do it are talking about the fear of what's going to happen if we do it. Half of the people are talking about, oh, we're going to, you know, bring more tourists, we're going to bring, have better business, you know, improve finances, Eureka Springs have a better reputation, la, 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 la. There's been no objective evidence on either side. It's just people telling us what they feel and what they think. And unfortunately, you stole my quote, but I thought it was Franklin Roosevelt, I didn't know it was Churchill. You have nothing to fear but fear itself. I think in this particular case, the best thing to do is to take the chance, pass the ordinance and see how it works out. So I make a motion that we assign a number to this ordinance and read it for the first time.
I'll second.
Ms. Snyder?
Are we in discussion?
Yes.
Okay. First, I want to clarify a few things. People keep saying that those of us against it's because of fear, this has come up several times. No, as a long timer, it's not fear of what could happen, it's experience of what has happened. Back in the day when we were conducting what we shall call it illegal entertainment districts, we know exactly what can happen in this town when it comes to drinking on the street and it ain't pretty. So no, it's not fear, it's experience and knowledge. I've got a couple of questions in regards to, first, I would like to ask Damon up to the mic for a minute, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Since you are, in your own words, the experienced, knowledgeable person, I would like to know, and just a straight answer, no sidestepping.
Sure.
No, no point Trumpism, okay? How many people who are researching for a vacation site actually include drinking on the street as a requirement?
None.
Okay, so how can everybody sit there and say, you can, that's it? I just knew that one. I should drop the experienced one. So zero people include drinking on the street as a requirement to come here for vacationing. So how can all of you people who are for it keep saying it's going to bring in tourism? Tourism obviously has nothing to do with it because zero people, according to the expert, do not research drinking on the street for a vacation spot. Okay, that's number one. Number two, since this is going to cost a whole lot more than five bucks a week, I'd like to know what city budget items will be ended to pay for this entertainment district, for the extra expenses of employees, employee hours, cleanup, so on and so forth. Are we going to turn down our sidewalk repairs, which are already lacking? What are we going to have to give up to pay for this? The next one is, nobody has yet given a price. And I'm talking all these people, the committee and everybody who is for this to go on, how many dollars, round figure obviously, since we haven't done this, does everybody think it's going to cost? We have not had a single dollar amount put before us. We would like to do this two days a week, five days, whatever, and it will cost the city, we're assuming, around. There has not been a single number put out. Why not? Are y'all too afraid to give the amount? That's what it looks like. The next one, how come the mayor hasn't mentioned any kind of cost? He hasn't said word one, he's been all part of this, he's pushed for it, and he does have the numbers because the numbers are in his office. So why have we not had numbers put before us on expenses that we think this is going to cost? Nobody is talking money. I'd like to know why, because that's going to be one of the really big. I'd like to know why, because that's gonna be one of the really big expenses. How much? Where does it come from? How do we make it up? Now, as for saying, well, we need to try it so we know if it's gonna work or not, I'm sorry, but I'm confused here. My understanding at the beginning of all this was temporary is what we were going to do so we could see if it would work to have a permanent entertainment district. We've had basically one and a half temporaries. One was actually a real honest-to-God temporary, and that was the one out at the Paul and Susie's place, the motorcycle place. The other one was another one of our, that we've always had illegal entertainment districts when we did our festival thingy. So, that's it. We've had one and a half temporaries to practice on to see if it'll work. Boy, that's good. That's good stuff to base anything on. Come on. Why do we need to rush into sunset clause or not into making this law when we have not done the temporaries as promised from the beginning, as heavily pushed from the beginning? There have been no numbers given out, no estimates of numbers, nothing else. What is everybody trying to hide from the people? And that is exactly what it comes down to. Why are there no numbers? No price, no cost. Why? I wanna know why before this goes any further. The people in town want to know why. Who is hiding what from the people? Those are our questions, and we are talking to people who vote for all of you.
Ms. Harmon?
I just have a question, and this goes back to it. Mickey just said about cost. And I've got several questions for different individuals, but I'll start with you first. Have you ever received information or have you done any studies as far as cost goes associated with, and it's just really just a yes or no? Have you ever withheld that information from city council?
No.
Okay. And then the next question is for chief of police. If, can I ask you a question real quick?
Yes, ma'am.
And my understanding is you were involved with the entertainment district, the committee?
Yes, ma'am.
And you had several of these discussions about cost and whatnot. Originally, we started out at seven days a week. We've now whittled this down based on what we have in front of us to a three-day-a-week. And because I've heard several times that you have said that at this point you don't see any increase, I just wanna know whether or not that is still your belief that there will not be a need for additional police officers for those three days based on the timeframe that we're kind of in right now and/or additional funding for whatever purposes could come up because of the three-day entertainment district?
Yeah, because the times that it's, that we've got it set right now, and we had it, and we discussed it with the weekends thing, because the weekends are heavy as time anyway, and especially at the time of season and everything it's at right now. And then we also have a hire that, it's kinda like a swing shift, you might say. So, in the summertime, when SRO comes out of the school, that officer will move to nights. So, it'll actually help with the night officers as well on that aspect of it. And with those days and those times, at this, because we don't necessarily see something right now in the future coming up, that we should be okay right there.
So, you feel comfortable with knowing?
Worst-case scenario, there might be some overtime costs on some stuff, but it's, right now, I don't see that right now in the future the way it's written right now.
Okay.
Before we discuss some stuff.
I just wanted to clarify because...
Of course, that's a whole different scenario and everything.
I'd rather hear it from you than assume you've said it based on what someone else has said.
No, and we've discussed some stuff right now. I don't see that necessarily right at this moment right now.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you.
Ms. McLeod?
A couple things. One, there's nothing in here for continuation if it is to continue, so it'd take another ordinance to extend it, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the second thing is, I mean, there's another old quote that, I don't know who came up with it, but I've used it many times. If a frog had wings, he wouldn't bump his, and so, you know, that's, nothing ventured, nothing gained.
Ms. Green? Frogs don't drink.
Well, I've listened to the concerns, and they're valid concerns. One of them is the underage drinking. Well, I can come in town as a kid, and I'll punch you on that one, and run around with this. So, some kid grabbing a cup off the street isn't gonna stop him from coming in and drinking with that. So, I don't consider that a concern. What I've seen is, in fifteen years of having lodging, most of my guests aren't huge drinkers. You know, there's maybe a wine bottle there, maybe three bottles of beer they drank. I know they've gone out and had a couple glasses with their meal. I just don't see this as a huge thing. We're not a street fair. If this was New Orleans, I would be worried. But the people's gonna get a glass of wine, they're gonna walk around and window shop and go home. Or if it's ninety degrees out, who's gonna wanna sit outside and drink when they can go sit in a bar? And the other thing is, what they could do in the bar, they're gonna do when they walk out on the street, so we still have the same problems. I don't think somebody walking around with a glass of wine is probably gonna hurt anything. I actually don't think it's gonna be much of anything, because we're not a street fair. You know, you can go sit in Basin Park, you can walk up the street. Our young people were the ones that were driving this, and it's young people that have come up here with multiple business. They're strong, they wanna try this. They're our future. I just, this is, a couple of months, we have a sunset clause if it doesn't work, let's give these people a chance. You know, like she said, the only thing we have to fear is fear ourselves, so I'm done.
Anybody else? Ms. Meyer?
I had two beverage control, beverage license holders tell me that one of their fears, and I'm sorry, it's fear, is that if someone walks into their bar that's been drinking elsewhere, that chug a lugs their last drink because they can't bring it in, they don't know how much they've drunk, they haven't been monitoring them, and if they leave drunk and they wreck their car, they are liable, or if they fall down, they're liable. There is a fear that the increase of the bar's liability will go up, the license holder's Now, I'd have to talk to, ask a license holder or an ABC agent to find out all about that, but that's what their fears are.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment to Harry's statement? In the defense of that, Harry, if that tavern owner doesn't wanna participate, they don't have to sell anybody a glass to take someplace else anyway. They don't have to do that.
They don't have to take the glass someplace else.
No, they can't, they can't walk in with a glass from someplace else and here, they fill it up.
That's not what I said. No, you misunderstood me. Okay, let's keep it. All right. Yeah, you misunderstood me. No, the point was, they come with a drink that they can't bring in, and they glug it down before they go in, and they toss it in the trash, and then they come in and they drink more. They don't, the bar is not allowing them to leave, let's say they don't want to participate with the armband thing and everything, but now somebody has just chug a lugged a chunk of alcohol because they can't drink it out, you know, because they wanna come in with the music or whatever is happening. Instead of finishing their drink at the last place and walking up the street and sobering up a little bit, the fear is that they're gonna drink too much before they reach their limit without even knowing it.
I may say to that, that having drank a little bit in my time, walking a hundred yards has never made a whole lot of difference in improving my sobriety. So, I don't...
Ms. Snyder?
Good old days. Okay, so, so far, no single person has bothered to address the money?
We just did. The police officer did.
No. Oh, what Brian had to say did not cover expenses. We need to have...
There is no expenses on the public works either.
Butch, how much are we gonna spend on the cups and on the bracelets, and who's paying for them? All the cleanup and everything else, all that kinda stuff. Nobody has addressed any of the expenses, where the money's coming from, and how it's gonna be replaced. Now, the bars that wanna participate, are they the ones expected to buy glasses and bracelets? Or is the city? Because my understanding from previous conversations was it was the city if we go to permanent.
Ms. Green?
I'd like to ask Kendra a couple of questions.
Oh, Jesus.
Kendra, you kinda headed this up, and was there ever any talk about what Mickey's?
About the costs and expenses? Well, first of all, Brian addressed the biggest part of the expense, which would be additional police budget. Well, you can shake your head, no, but we've done a lot of research on this, so, I mean...
Please, go ahead.
Fact of the matter is, that's the biggest expense, and that's why we narrowed it down, was because of budgetary concerns. We narrowed it down from the original seven days a week, from one to ten, down to three days a week in order to cut those expenses way back so that it would be fairly negligible. As far as cups, wristbands, et cetera, that's part of what y'all are gonna have to decide at this point, is how you're going to handle that, and that's gonna be in your ordinance, that's up to y'all. And if you want the committee to go back and do those details for you, we'll be happy to do it, but we're not gonna continue to waste our time if we're not moving forward. We all have businesses and jobs. In response to, just to clear up a few misconceptions about your underage drinking question, and that's legitimate, okay? Underage drinking is always legitimate. But, oh, well, whoever did. The ABC, and the same thing to Alderman Myers' question, the ABC laws remain the same, okay? So, you can never walk into an establishment with a drink. In this case, you could leave the Rowdy Beaver, or the Beaver Den down there right now, currently, be drunk or no waltz and pissant, walk down to Missy's and walk in, and she would have the exact same issue that he's discussing right now. Those ABC laws remain the same. Bar owners have to be diligent always, currently, to make sure that their patrons aren't drunk. Nothing really changes in that regard. Same with underage drinking. All minors will still have to be, bar owners will still be responsible for carding or verifying the age of whoever they're serving. That does not change. ABC, this doesn't change any ABC laws except that you can carry a drink if you're of age, if it's in the appropriate container that you all determine, if the bar owner determines that you are under capacity to be able to drink safely, then you can carry a drink from, you know, the Beaver Den and down to Basin Park to watch the music. That's what changes. That's the long and short of it.
Okay. Again, addressing Mickey's concerns, do you reasonably think that we will probably not know until we try this, any of the cost of, like, cleanup or anything?
I mean, right now, honestly, under the time period, we're all Eureka's, most of us have businesses here. We're talking about ending it in June, is that correct? So, this is during the slowest time of the year. They're coming and picking up trash. Go out there and look right now how much trash they picked up in the trash can by Sugar and Spite today. There were like four cups in it, so, because the weekend was terrible. I mean, I don't anticipate that there's going to be an influx of trash and garbage and everything else that's gonna be thrown away, that's gonna be so unmanageable that it's gonna require extra garbage trips between now and June. So, I mean, there's a certain measure of doing it during the slowest part of the year so you can see what it looks like, and yes, certainly, if during that time we see people flooding to town, drinking a ton, and filling the trashcans up so massively that we have to hire, you know, more garbage trips, then I'd say it's a success, but that's up to y'all to decide.
Mr. Thomas?
At some point, you're just beating a dead horse. This has gone on for, you know, what, five months, six months, and the same concerns on both sides have been expressed over and over and over again. It's time to vote.
Call the question.
I don't want to do that, because there has to be a vote on calling the question.
All right, Ms. Green, you have one more time, policeman.
No, that's just not me.
I'm Ms. Snyder, I'm sorry.
Well, Kendra just brought up another very good thing. How can we be trying this to see if it's gonna work and what it's gonna cost if we're doing it during the dead time of the season? Why are we rushing? If we do this June, July, and August, we'd have a really good idea of what it's gonna cost, what it's gonna entail, how much garbage is gonna be thrown out on the sidewalks, how much puking and everything else is gonna be done, how much extra work for public works, fire, and police. Why are we rushing? Why are we not just doing temporary, bring it up again for June or something? Why do it now when we aren't gonna learn anything? We're not gonna have numbers, we're not gonna have anything. It's the dead time of the year, just like Kendra said. So, why are we pushing it now instead of waiting?
All right. We got a motion and second on the table. Any further discussion? Somebody reread, Madam Clerk, reread the motion for me, we've gone through theirs.
Do a sign and number and read the ordinance.
All right.
I don't think there was a vote. No, there was none of them.
No, there wasn't a vote. I was just asked for, okay. All right, we got a motion on the table to assign a number and read this ordinance on its first reading. All those in favor, sing, five, a sing, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Nay. 22.
The ordinance number will be 2292. An ordinance to authorize the creation of a permanent entertainment district with sunset clause, whereas prior ordinances of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, and Act 812 of 2019 of the Arkansas State Legislature allow for the creation of permanent entertainment districts and setting reasonable standards for the regulation of alcohol possession within the district, and, whereas this ordinance is intended to promote hospitality and tourism within the city, to highlight restaurants, nightlife, entertainment, and hospitality options to tourists, and to create standards for the regulation of alcohol possession within the boundaries of the designated entertainment district. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section 1, location. The entertainment district shall be located as follows, beginning at the corner of Spring Street and Main Streets and continuing up Spring Street. Uh, that's interesting.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's go to the second section, 1. The entertainment district shall be located as follows. 95 South Main.
Beginning at the south boundary?
Okay, beginning at the south boundary of 82 Armstrong, which is the other side of the Cat House, by the way, then went to the west, to the south boundary of 95 South Main, which is the historic district, which is the historic museum. Thence north along Main Street to the intersection of Spring Street and Main Street, thence along the west side of Spring to the intersection of Howell, German Alley, including the entire intersection, then east along German Alley to the intersection of Cushing and Center Street, including the entire intersection, then south on Center Street to the intersection of Tibbs Alley, which is a stairway, thence along Tibbs Alley, crossing Main Street to the north boundary of 67 North Main, then south along Main Street to the point of beginning with all adjoining properties included within the district. Section 2, dates and times hereby permitted. District is authorized to be in operation from 3:00 PM until 10:00 PM each Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Section 3, identification of participants. Those persons who wish to possess or consume from an open alcohol beverage container within the district or enter the district from a permitted alcohol beverage establishment with an open container shall first obtain an identification wristband as approved by the Eureka Springs mayor and provided at the points of sale for said alcoholic beverages. Section 4, applicable state and local laws. All laws and ordinances not addressed herein shall remain in full force and effect. Section 5, removal of alcoholic beverage from the district by participants. It shall be unlawful for any person to remove an open alcoholic beverage container from the entertainment district. All unfinished quantities of alcoholic beverages must be... All unfinished quantities of alcoholic beverages must be properly disposed of prior to the participant leaving the entertainment district. Section 6, Police and Fire Authority. Nothing in this ordinance prevents the Chief of the Eureka Springs Police Department or the Chief of the Eureka Springs Fire Department from suspending the operation hours of any entertainment district if necessary, to comply with local, state, or federal law, or fire codes, or as necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. Section 7, Expiration Clause. The entertainment district hereby created shall expire and cease to exist at 12:00 midnight on June 30, 2020, except for enforcement of prior violation purposes unless further action is taken by the Eureka Springs City Council.
Ms. McClung?
I can make a motion to approve ordinance 2292 on its first reading.
Second.
Okay, got a motion to approve ordinance 2292 on its first reading and second by Ms. Harmon. Any further discussion? Ms. McClung?
Yeah, a couple things. I'd like to see some changes, and at least I'll suggest some anyway. One is, in section 3, that I'm not so sure that the wristband is the way to go. I think a biodegradable cup, that would be, that would be different than any of the other cups that you purchase at any store, you know? They've got them out there, that they can be gotten. And I think that that would be a more agreeable kind of a product, and I think it'd be better than a wristband, and you'd be avoiding styrofoam and things of that nature, plastic cups. And I just think that that would be a good thing. Also, I think there needs to be a clause in here, if it works well and we wanna continue it, that we don't have to have another ordinance, that it can be, you know, that we don't have to fight the process again. And then also, I think that there also needs to be a clause in there for pulling the plug or suspending the district if the fears, you know, come to fruition. So, that way, by just a simple resolution or a voice vote by the commission, or by the council.
Okay. Ms. Meyer?
Yeah, I agree with Terry, and the one where we can have a resolution in there to suspend it on any given weekend prior to that weekend would be a good idea.
Ms. Snyder?
When did we vote on and agree to the dates and times? The last paper I saw, it was Friday and Saturday. Now, it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday. I know all of it's been discussed, but when did we make this decision?
So, it's been this way. Ms. Green, Ms. Snyder, or Ms. Green?
I agree with Terry on the biodegradable cups. I also agree with Harry. I think that there's certain event weekends where it just may not be appropriate, and I'd like to have some control over that. And I like, I think it was Mr. McClung's idea that if the first night it happens and it's bad, that we can suspend it then.
Mr. Thomas?
I'd like to clarify, are you and Mr. McClung making motions for amendments, or what?
No, just, I think we're just making...
I haven't made that as such, yet. I just wanted to bring it up first and see what, you know, the thoughts were.
I think we're just discussing.
Yeah.
Ms. Harmon?
I just have two questions. Number 1, section 1, is that just a dupe? So, does that get completely crossed out?
That's crossed out.
Okay, and then I do have a question.
That first section 1.
The first section 1, okay.
The second.
I just wanna make sure I'm reading it right. And then I do have a question for the police chief.
Yes, ma'am.
We're going back and forth between a wristband and a cup.
Okay.
Do you have a preference? As far as sight, if a truck or car's driving down the street, or a police officer, do you have a preference as to whether or not it's a wristband or it's a cup?
I don't necessarily have a preference, no.
You don't?
The biggest thing for us is just a visual, so we'll know who is participating, so on and so forth. If someone is underage, whether they have a city cup or a Yeti, if an officer or anybody has any question, they can still make contact regardless of what that visual thing is.
Okay.
So, the biggest thing is just a visual for us to know who's participating and who's not.
Can I give a little clarification about the company's man? Can y'all write this? Will that help?
Yep.
We discussed both in committee, and whenever we discussed cups, we thought it would be a good idea to have them stamped with, you know, so that you would know what it was. Eureka Springs Entertainment District, and then have actually the dates and times, so that people couldn't say they didn't know when it was. That's obviously an expense that either the city or the bar owners have to absorb. The reason that we went with wristbands is because the bars can actually sell those, so they can recoup their expense. So, back to Ms. Snyder's question about expense, if we do wristbands, and you can actually do, there are places that do a combination of both, in our experience or in our research, some places do both. But if the bars pay 3 cents for silicone wristband, then they can sell them for 50 cents and recoup their cost on that.
I also believe that a special cup, you can charge a little more for that to carry out, too.
Sure.
And, you know, and to have it be specific, I don't even, I think, I think if it just got a certain color to it that you can pick up, if it's a good biodegradable cup, that, you know, no one, people aren't, they just don't go to the grocery store and pick it up. They're just not available.
Right, and we spoke to Vinnie Keith, representative, one of the guys that kind of spoke to us.
Yeah, I know Brian did.
Yeah, Brian did, and he has had some great options for that.
I would certainly like to look at that, but...
Also, just for the council's information, even if we do use a biodegradable cup, they're not recyclable. They will not pick them up and recycle them. Only thing that gets picked up anymore...
Of course, of course not. You don't recycle biodegradable products.
No, okay, just making sure that people are aware of that. Ms. Green?
I kinda would like to leave the wristband, just because I think it might help with any underage drinking. Like Brian said, it's more of identification, but it's not a big point to me, it's just my opinion.
With underage drinking, it does not matter. Honestly, with a wristband, bars still are responsible. You can't come in and say, "I got this wristband," at somewhere else, as a bar owner or ABC permittee. We still are responsible for carding that person. We can't just, none of us will ever say, "Oh, go ahead, we'll go ahead and serve you," because we'd lose our license. We can't, if the ABC agent catches that person and they're underage and we served them, we can't say, "Well, they had a wristband, so we thought..." That's zero excuse by ABC terms.
Ms. Snyder?
So, will neither then, the wristbands nor the cups have that actual days, dates on there?
That's what I just said, that was our recommendation, that they would.
So, what you're saying is the bar would get a cup, they'd put their bar stamp, and then today's date?
No, whenever I said, sorry, I'm sorry, sorry.
Because I said the dates and time, or days and times, I meant the days and times that the district would be in order. So, it would say, "Eureka Springs." Our recommendation would have been, it would say, like, something like, "Eureka Springs Entertainment District, Friday, or Thursday through Saturday from 3:00 to 10:00." So, that everybody has that information on the cup that they're carrying, and they can't say, if Brian catches them at midnight, "Oh, I thought it went until midnight." They're looking at it right there on the cup that they're carrying.
Okay, but the point that I was leading to, so, there's no daily date on the wristband or the cup, so, somebody comes into town, they get one of these, they have their drinks, they go home. A month later, their underage teenage kid takes the wristband, and because he's, or the cup rather, and because he's got the cup, and he's got his own booze that nobody knows about, he can walk around town.
Did you just understand, though, what I said? You can't do that. You can't do that.
If the kid's shut up...
Underage drinking is illegal, period, whether the kid has a wristband or not.
He's walking on the street with a legal cup.
It doesn't, the legal cup doesn't make him legal drinker, it's an illegal...
Ms. Snyder, it's already been pointed out, that's illegal against the law.
If he's got the cup and the wristband, the police aren't gonna stop him.
That's inaccurate, you can...
Not if he's, unless he's acting weird.
Really? I mean, I'm pretty sure that if they see somebody thinks it's 15...
You can stop anyone.
Yeah, a lot of cops are gonna stop everybody.
If we see someone, if we question their age, we can make contact regardless.
Well, that I know. But the point is, if this stuff is out there, we still don't know who's gonna pay for it, which needs to be decided. If this is out there, it looks like the person is legal. Now, I was carded until I turned 29, so, that doesn't really matter. I know what you're saying, I'm a police family, I know what you're saying. Point me. These things are out there, if they don't have a daily date or designation of some kind, anybody can pick them up, use them, and have their own booze, and not even give us a penny for anything.
Mr. Thomas?
Well, I have some amendments that might clear up some of these questions that Ms. Snyder's raising. I don't know if we'll ever clear up the questions that Ms. Snyder's raising.
Talk to the residents, that's who's giving me the questions.
All right. Now, Mr. Thomas, would you like to read your amendments?
Yes, I'm proposing these as amendments. Number 1, no container in which an alcoholic beverage is suspended and removed from the licensed premises shall exceed 16 fluid ounces in size. No person shall possess on the streets, sidewalks, rights of way, parking lots, or outdoor public areas located within the entertainment district, any open alcoholic beverage container which exceeds 16 fluid ounces in size. No person may consume or possess an alcoholic beverage within the district which was either not purchased from a licensee within the district, or which is not in an approved container. This prohibition shall explicitly extend to any refill of any approved container with any alcoholic beverage which was not purchased from a licensee within the district. Number 4, each licensee must display a boundary map of the district at its entrance and exits, and clearly warn viewers of the prohibition against the removal of alcoholic boundaries from the confines of the district. Number 5, the city shall place adequate signage around the perimeter of the district to further advise individuals of the boundaries of the district. Number 6, the permission to possess and consume alcoholic beverages within the district and outside of licensed premises does not extend to any vehicle, and any person possessing any open container within a vehicle or on a vehicle within the district is in violation of the provisions of this ordinance.
Mr. Meyer?
How'd you type that up so fast?
Oh, I just was working while you guys were, you know, adding the same thing and forth.
You're so good, Bob.
You know, we talked about the wristbands, and I think the paper ones that stick on you so you can't slip it off and give it to someone else would probably be the best answer.
Like the hospital ones?
Yeah.
Your blood types.
They're cheaper, too. Have your blood type on there, yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Thomas, you wanna make a motion to amend the ordinance with your...
Yes, I would like to amend the ordinance with the six changes or additions that I just read.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Ms. McClung?
Yeah, what would be adequate signage of, is it, just at each port of entry for road, or...
Yeah, yeah, that's, you know, like, when you have a square, they said you had to have four boundary notices. We don't have a square, so you just have to have several more.
Just at each road entry or something like that, of some sort?
Terry, what do you mean by road entry?
It's coming into...
23 North, 23 South, Spring Street, Bennett Street.
Okay, these are signs that's the boundary, so are you saying signs, there's...
Yeah, just a small sign about, you know...
Well, they're not supposed to be drinking and driving, they're supposed to be walking and drinking, so...
Okay, Mr. Thomas, what, item 6?
Yes.
I'm not sure what you're wanting...
Well, there has, you know, there has been some confusion in other places, because the laws usually preclude any open container in a vehicle. And so, this clarifies the fact that even if the vehicle is parked in the entertainment district, you still cannot have an open container inside your vehicle.
That makes good sense. That's already state law.
Well, I'm saying it was, this clarifies it, because there was some confusion in other towns as to whether or not, you know, this entertainment district kind of overrode that. So, this is just clarification.
Okay, Ms. Harmon?
I'm just not real, real clear on 4, on how that's written.
Well, other cities have required licensees to have at their exits a sign, you know, describing the days and hours of the, of operation, and a map of the district.
And I, I'm okay with that, it's just that the way it's written, it says, "You must warn viewers of the prohibition against the removal of alcoholic boundaries from the confines of the district."
Oh, it's supposed to be beverages, I'm sorry, alcoholic beverages.
Okay, 'cause I kept reading that, thinking...
Does that clarify that for you?
Yes, much.
More of the alcoholic, well, that's good, Bob, that works.
Thank you, good catch. All right, anybody else? Okay, we got a motion and a second to amend the ordinance 2292 with these six items. All those in favor, sing five, but saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I'll have Mr. Weaver incorporate these, and we may make some minor changes, but I think the justice here. Mr. McClung?
Yes, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to amend, or to add a clause regarding the council's ability to suspend operations by a voice vote, would be the simplest way. Also, I think there needed to be a clause to extend the sunset date as well, so we don't have to bring it back.
Mr. Weaver?
On your sunset extension, that would not be a sunset then, and it would not be appropriate. So, you're either gonna have to take a vote to remove the clause, or simply do without the clause to begin with. As to your voice vote, I would caution you of making it that simple of a removal, because there are going to be, especially if you pass these amendments that Bob just put in, in your final verdict, there's gonna be expense that the bar owner has to go to, to putting up signage and purchasing cups if they're gonna purchase cups. And if you simply can remove it by a voice vote, it makes it a lot more likely that they can bring a suit against the city for removing a right that you've extended.
Resolution be all right?
It'd be much better to do it by a written resolution than just by a simple...
Let's make it that way, please, if that's...
I believe the enabling ordinance allows that.
Yeah. Now, the police chief already has that power to remove it if a riot takes place, or fire chief also, and we wanna keep those, because those are standard provisions that cities have recognized for many years.
Sure.
That you could prevent harm to your citizens by having authorities to it.
We're not, we'll pull the plug on the one and not have it, so it'd just be the one amendment.
You're keeping the first one and changing it to resolution rather than voice vote?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I'll second that, okay?
Ms. Harmon?
I just have a question, based on what he said about not saying there's a sunset clause. Based on what they just said, even if we do it by resolution, are you saying you can include it, but we should take up the sunset clause and just have an expiration date on it? But that it can be extended or changed by resolution?
It can be changed by resolution anyway. I don't think you need to remove the sunset clause if it may... I don't think you need to remove the sunset clause if it makes people comfortable with trying it at this point, with the knowledge that there will have to be another vote.
Okay.
It may only take a resolution to continue it after that. Be better with an ordinance, but I would not remove the sunset clause. And if it, what Terry's proposing of saying, well, you got to take a vote to enact the sunset clause later on, is the way I was understanding it, would basically negate whether there's a sunset clause there or not to begin with.
Okay, so Terry's amendment is the council's ability to suspend the operations by resolution upon due cause.
Yes.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, sing five, but saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Anything else? Mr. Thomas?
This is not an amendment, but one of the primary concerns that came up was people wanting some criteria for whether or not this was successful. And, you know, if we're going to process this in a second reading in two weeks and a third reading in two more weeks, somebody should be working on that criteria. And I just, you know, I would be happy, maybe for the entertainment district committee, if they would be willing to, to work on that. That would be my suggestion, because they were already organized, they already understand the process.
All right. I think that's a good thing. Let's see if we get this thing passed, and if so, then I think that assures the committee that this is a valid ordinance and probably be able to get them to help set some parameters for, guidelines for success or failure on there. All right, anybody else?
One quick thing, Mr. Mayor, and that just is that, you know, we will have three readings, and I think we can kind of work on that cup or the wristband thing yet, and save that for the third reading until we get for sure what we want to do with that. So, I'm ready to go.
All right. All right, we got a, make, there's a motion to approve ordinance 2292 as amended on its first reading. All those in favor, sing five, but saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. No.
All right, was that five, one? Terry, was that...
Yes.
Did the aye or not?
Yeah, I said aye.
Okay, five, one. All right, thank you. That takes care of that one. Thank you, entertainment district people, and everybody, all the council members for putting this up on this, so, all right. Brings us up to our next item is a discussion of 2020 budget, a motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
All right. I think Mr. Clark is still here. Well, I understand. I know you had made a change in the budget about adding in the auditorium cost in here.
I did. It's in the capital improvements section.
Page?
What page?
And we raised it to 145,000.
Oh, it's on six?
Yep.
And we had 50,000 in there last year, and in the previous version of this budget that you received, it was 60,000, and our request was made to raise it to 145,000. That's essentially the major change in this last version that I've just given you.
I just have one question, and I don't think I asked it the last time. Last year, we had put some money in for economic development. Do we still have that in there? I think we had 10 in there last year.
I don't know if it'd be under the mirrors.
I don't think we'd, I don't know.
Yes, it's in there. It's the second item under non-departmental.
What page are you on again?
Economic Development, 10,000.
On page one?
Oh, yes, there it is. Yep, 5708.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
See ya.
I don't.
All right. Ms. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve the budget as presented for 2020.
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion?
Let me think, because I did not realize we were going to have a motion to approve it tonight.
Yeah, I didn't either. I thought we were going to have another...
I mean, you know, it's discussion. I mean, you know, so...
Well, I have a couple of changes, or additions, I'd like to make.
Okay.
You want to do that after we vote?
Oh, well, go ahead.
Okay.
I mean, we're in discussion, so...
And I'm also concerned how long this discussion's going to go. I'm going to take about 15 or 20 minutes. If there is anybody else that's going to take a lot of time, should we...
I think we need another workshop. I think we need to discuss wages and, and several items on this budget. We haven't really been able to discuss the budget much since last December, so why don't we meet next week, next Monday night?
I'm missing page one.
Put this off.
I'm missing page one.
You are?
Yeah.
Me, too.
All right, are you making a motion to defer this to next Monday?
Yes, I am.
She's missing one, too.
That's okay, I'll, I'll...
She'll get one later.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Ms. Harmon?
Are you saying, I mean, next Monday, we wouldn't have a meeting?
We'd have a workshop.
So, we're actually deferring a vote until the next meeting?
Right.
Which would be, which date? What date is that?
That would be the 26th, 27th, you mean?
We're still good, as far as that goes.
Okay, 'cause it's the 31st?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're still okay.
So, Mr. McClung could withdraw his motion?
Beg your pardon?
He could withdraw his motion to...
We can defer it to the next meeting, or I'll withdraw it, it doesn't matter, I don't care, whatever you want to do.
Well, actually, it takes precedence on deferring it, so...
Oh, okay.
Yeah. If there's a discussion on, on the date for moving it to next Monday, you want it at 5:00, 6:00?
I'd prefer 5:00, but...
Next Monday, or the council...
Next Monday, the 20th.
For a workshop on Monday. Okay.
At 5:00.
5:00 is fine with me.
Okay, Susan, Ms. Harmon?
I just have a question, because, Bob, it sounds like you have several things.
Two.
Oh, just two things? Okay. And, Harry, it sounds like you've got, is there any way for us to see this before the workshop starts?
Yeah, you know, actually...
I could send you mine.
Yeah, if you could do that...
I'll send them to the clerics, you can...
You really should not. You'll be violating them.
That's what I thought. Do you have a rule?
No, I was just going to verbally address them.
Would it be verbally, tonight? I thought that's what we were trying to avoid, is a long discussion.
Oh, it's bringing that, it's not for discussion, it's just bringing up points of information.
Are you saying because it's his recommendation, it's a push towards this is what I want?
Whether or not it's for you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're going to vote on it eventually, because you're going to eventually vote on whether to approve or disapprove the budget.
Mr. Thomas, how about if we defer, if we, if Mr. Meyer will remove his, his motion, and you go ahead and bring up your items?
Right.
In public, and then we can go ahead and...
Make a motion.
Make a motion to, I mean, you can just give us basic information.
Right, okay.
Mr. Meyer, would you like to, would you?
Well, sure.
And whoever seconded?
I second it.
All right, refer...
Can you make it short and sweet?
Okay, unlike the CAPC and the hospital, which we just addressed tonight, they get money that never touches the city coffers. Parks Department has two taxes. The state of Arkansas sends or does one electronic transfer into the general fund. So that Parks money comes into the general fund, and then it goes out to Parks. However, it never shows up in our budget, and I truly believe that because the money comes into the general fund and then is dispersed, we are responsible for it, and it needs to be in our budget. So I, my motion, when we get to that point, is going to be to add a line item or whatever which shows Parks tax money received and Parks tax money sent out.
So you're just asking for a paper trail?
Right, correct.
Okay, got you.
In this budget. The second thing is, I'm going to ask again for $3,000 for city council travel, professional travel.
Okay. All right, now then, okay, are there, anything more?
Nope, that's it. I can discuss it more at the workshop, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I got a lot to discuss at the workshop.
I have a question on his thing. Is it possible for Parks to be autonomous, so to speak, in regards to their money?
That's a separate, separate item.
No, that would be something we'd need to know ahead of time before the budget meeting, or workshop, rather. Have you looked into that?
The budget is, the way the money's being transferred, Mr. Clark?
The money is collected with the regular sales tax, and it's remitted to the state. And to my knowledge, the state will not remit it back to Parks. They will remit it back to the city as they do currently.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
And so, and the difference with the CAPC, they collect their own taxes. And so, we, it never, never hits us. And, but the way the state transmits it back to us, it's an electronic transfer, and there's three separate transfers. There's one of the 1% tax that comes into the city. The other 1% tax goes to Bancorp South in Stuttgart, and then they remove partially, partial bond payment, and then they remit the remainder to us, and it hits the general fund. And since there's two different Parks taxes, those are sent in two different electronic transfers to our general fund. And then we transmit that out, and one transfer to Parks, along with the information that the state sends showing which is which, because one of them is more different than the other one.
Thank you.
That's the way it's handled.
All right, now then, I'll take your motion to defer this to next Monday.
Next Monday.
At 5:00.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion on that? All in favor, sing five, but saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. Thank you, Mr. Clark, for your patience.
Is there anything else? If not, I'm going...
I don't believe so.
Lady.
Do it. All right, unless you want to talk about animal care.
I've got a tomcat at home that's waiting to be fed.
All right, get a motion to...
Motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss ordinance 2290.
I'll second.
All right. Okay, this is our third reading for ordinance 2290. Comments, discussion?
I'd like to suspend the rules and read ordinance 2290 on its third reading for passage.
By title only.
By title only.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second to read this.
I'll get it right one of these times.
Third reading, title only. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, sing five, oops. Okay, roll call.
Oh, Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Six, zero. Ordinance number 2290, and ordinance amending the Reek Springs Municipal Code Regarding Animal Care.
All right, get a motion to, Mr. Thomas?
I'm moved to approve ordinance number 2290 on its third reading.
Second.
Okay, get a motion to approve 2290 on its third reading. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, all right.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Why not?
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Six, zero.
All right.
Sorry about shaking the paper.
That's all right. Okay, that takes care of that. That brings us up to our motion, our new business, setting meeting dates and other business that we need to take care of, so. Motion to discuss the setting of meeting dates.
Motion to discuss. Second.
All right. I think everybody should have in their packet, schedule meetings.
If they stayed the second and fourth?
Yeah.
I didn't get one of those.
Oh, nobody got one? I'm sorry. Oh, well, okay, meetings are still, I mean, except for the council, meeting taken the second and the fourth, what we've done last year.
I'll make a motion that...
Any change for that?
I'll make a motion that we keep the meeting dates for the second and fourth Mondays of each month.
At 6:00 P.M.?
6:00 P.M.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, Ms. Harmon?
This is for meeting dates, including budget work?
No, this is just our normal city council meetings.
Okay, so this is just the council meetings?
It's just council meetings at this point.
So if you do a separate one for budget?
We can do, the budgets include that. We have that on our second meeting, second meeting of the month at 5:15.
Yep, so can, do we have to do them separately, or can we do them together?
No, we can include them all together, actually. I don't see a reason why we can't.
Well, there was one motion already made and seconded.
I'll amend it to include the budget meetings on the fourth Monday at 5:15.
But just withdraw yours.
Oh, I'll withdraw it and make a motion...
And I'll withdraw.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we keep our meeting dates, the second and fourth Monday at 6:00 with the exception on the fourth Monday, we will have a budget meeting at 5:15.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, sing five, but saying aye?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Okay. Ms. Snyder?
I make a motion that we select Bob as our pro tem again. I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, sing five, but saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Rules of procedures, Mr. Thomas?
I move to use Robert Drew's order as rules of procedure for 2020.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Snyder?
I'd like to get something added, and I don't know if it would be there or a separate entity. I would like to add, having all council members informed by email, every time there's going to be an event going on in town, like the Tri-State thing we had last year and stuff like that, because we don't know. I was the only one who ever showed up for any of those things, and that's not right, because that's part of our job. But it's mostly because nobody knew about them. So when something gets scheduled, if your office could send us an email, you know, the big, I mean, the Tri-State, my God, that was huge. And that included, you know, that tour of the Crescent, and you spoke and everything, you know, that was really kind of big. And we need to keep those kind of things... And we, we need to keep those kind of things available to us to show up to, but we need to know about them.
Ms. Harmon?
I just have a question, is that, is, is that separate from Robert's Rules?
That's what I, that's what I said. I'm not sure if that includes.
It's separate. I make an announcement at every meeting, coming events.
That's not the same.
All the council members are here.
You never said anything about the Tri-State. There were a couple of things that you and I both went to that were not announced.
That's not even relevant.
But that is part of the procedure, and I didn't know if it should be part of that or a separate thing, separate discussion.
It's a separate discussion.
Mr. McLennan?
I just want to know if it's, if it's Robert Thomas's Rules of Order.
Yes.
I just want that clarified.
Yes.
And that's fine, I'm fine with that.
It's Thomas, Roberts.
All right, we got a motion. No, that's a separate issue altogether, Mickey.
Okay.
Okay, we got a motion to accept Robert Rules of Order as a rules of procedure. All those in favor, six, five, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Need a resolution? Okay, I guess our next item, do we have a resolution in our packet?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Do I get to add that thing in while we're talking about procedure and stuff? Well, no. Add it to the agenda.
Add it to the agenda. Add it to the agenda, yeah.
We're making a decision now, it's not that big a deal. Notify us when anything gets scheduled.
Add it to the agenda, please.
That's hard.
Okay, I got, need a motion to.
I'll make a motion to set a resolution, to set a public hearing for the vacating of alley east of Angle Street.
Second.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. McLennan?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yeah.
I would like to recommend.
I don't have that in my packet.
The, for the first meeting of February.
What's the date?
In order to have the adequate public hearing notices in the paper, I don't know, I don't have a calendar with me.
Mickey does.
All right. What's the date?
For when, what?
The first meeting is February.
February?
10.
The 10th?
February 10.
All right, let's see, this will be Resolution 769. A resolution to set a public hearing date for consideration of vacating an alley east of Angle Street in the Magnetic A survey, whereas the property owner of Lot 6 and Block 3 and Lot 1 of Block 9, formerly known as Block 7, in the Magnetic A survey has submitted a petition to the City of Eureka Springs to vacate an unopened alley running east and west, and whereas the signed petition was submitted to the City Council in regular session on January 13, 2020, along with a copy of the plaque showing the streets and adjoining lots, and whereas the Arkansas Code ACA 14301 and 302C provide that the City Council shall by resolution fix a day for the hearing of the petition filed to vacate a city, excuse me, a street or alley, and whereas the law further directs the city clerk to give notice of the meeting by publication once a week for two consecutive weeks, some newspaper published in Carroll County, Arkansas, and having general circulation in the city. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that the petition to vacate the above described alley is set for hearing on February 10 at 6:00 P.M. in the Auditorium Lobby of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, and the city clerk shall give notice of this meeting by publication as set forth by Arkansas Code ACA 14301 and 302C.
All right. That brings us up to agenda setting. You want to discuss the notification by email? Ms. Snyder?
Yeah, to add that one little part, yes, please.
Okay. Mr. Thomas?
Update from Planning Commission on their review of the vision plan?
No, I need a second on Ms. Snyder's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay.
And second, I'm boss.
You want to update on Planning Commission's.
Review of the vision plan.
And I'll second that.
Anybody else? Ms. Harmon?
I just have two things. Can, this is maybe not needed, but can we get a update on the auditorium bids on your?
Well, I'm hoping I'll get, yeah, I'm still waiting, I'm running into problems with the engineer now, not the architect.
So, you don't think you'll have them by the next meeting?
No, I won't have any.
Okay, and then my second, I'll, I'll just keep it on my list, and my second one is that.
It's on my list, too.
That we can set up a workshop with the hospital commission after February 1st?
Sure.
Just to have a kind of catch up?
Yeah. I'll second that.
Okay. Well, wait, what would, what's your motion?
That we have a workshop.
To set a date for a workshop?
Yeah, set a date for a workshop, sorry.
Okay, okay. All right. Okay. Ms. Harmon, I mean, Mr. Meyer?
Mr..
We ain't get married yet. I'd like to add the employee manual and conflict with, and its conflicts with the code, and just, maybe we can update it, it's, this is from 2007.
I'll second.
Okay.
One more.
Mr. McLennan?
I don't know if this would be an agenda thing or just a comment, but it's regarding the, the power lift here on the stairs.
Well, it's getting fixed.
Huh?
It's getting fixed.
It's getting fixed, so it's, it's been serviced, okay.
Well, I know, it hasn't been serviced yet, but it's, they had to get a part for it.
Okay, so it has been looked at and?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. All right, anything else?
Yeah, me too.
Mr. McLennan, comments?
Looking forward to another exemplary year in Eureka Springs. Good things will happen, I got a feeling.
Ms. Meyer?
Yes, I'm optimistic, too.
Ms. Harmon? Ms. Snyder?
I wish people would learn to slow down and get all their answers before they jump into stuff. At the next meeting, I would really appreciate, Mr. Mayor, having all the figures for the expenses that the city will have to go through for whatever parts we have to do.